Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of the servicemen and women who have served and continue to serve our country here and abroad. Clerk will call the roll call, please.
Counselor Anderson.
Yeah.
Crowe.
Here.
Dargangelo.
Here.
Kinnon.
Here.
Lucy.
Here.
Matheson.
Here.
Murphy.
Yes.
Nester. Spatafora. Altrino. Bucci.
Yes, here. Next order of business. The first order of business tonight is a resolve from Barbara Murphy, and that is, I'll just read it. The resolve that the Malden City Council urged the governor to invest in our communities. Barbara Murphy, for the paper, please.
I'll have Karen read it, I'm sorry.
Whereas since the 1990s, annual tax revenues are down by more than $3 billion as a share of the state's economy, and this ongoing structural shortfall is primarily the result of income tax cuts enacted over the past 15 years. And whereas the Commonwealth has made $3 billion in cuts to essential programs since the current recession began, including cuts to K-12 education, higher education, local aid, services for seniors, public safety, human services, and other programs. And whereas Massachusetts continues to face a revenue deficit that will no doubt lead to additional cuts in state and local programs in fiscal year 2013. And whereas between fiscal year 2008 budget and the fiscal year 2012 current budget, spending on general local aid funding as adjusted for inflation was cut by over half a billion dollars, or 36 percent. And whereas Malden has lost over $13 million in general local aid over the last four years as adjusted for inflation. And whereas this aid helps to pay for the critical services on which our community depends, including police and fire departments, garbage collection, road repair, education, playgrounds, libraries, et cetera. And whereas these services are what made Malden a good place to live, and they enhance the quality of life for all Malden residents. And whereas because of these cuts, Malden does not have the funds to adequately keep our schools clean. And whereas Malden will continue to struggle with these budget cuts year after year until the state's revenue deficit is addressed. And whereas in order to address that deficit, the state needs to raise significant new revenue. Therefore be it resolved that the Malden City Council urges the governor and state legislature to invest in our communities, to strengthen our economy, and to approve the quality of -- improve the quality of life of Massachusetts residents by creating new revenue sources. Counselor Murphy.
Counselor Murphy, for the paper.
Thank you, Madam President. Last week, the CEC Citizens Engagement Committee had the privilege of listening to a coalition of our citizens who have come -- who came to us as a city council to support this resolution. And it's comprised of the Mass -- representatives from the Mass Senior Action, SEIU 888 and Local 509, Massachusetts Teachers Association, Mass Budget and Policy Groups, and a number of other groups. They have been going around Massachusetts looking for support of this initiative, and as I'm looking at many signs there to invest in our community that are all out in the audience in yellow. They've been successful in having 15 different cities and towns sign on to this resolve, including Boston, Brockton, Quincy, New Bedford, Fall River, Arlington, and Brockton, to name a few of them. The resolve basically is asking the legislature to be creative in finding new revenue sources in order to support local aid, which is key to all of us in providing the services to our school system, our cities and towns, streets and roads, and our, you know, residents in general, whether it be through library or school needs and programs. So this is just a paper that I would ask your support on as it goes, that we could send it to the legislature saying that we would like them to focus on, you know, how they can start to increase revenues for the state of Massachusetts in order to support local aid as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I don't see any questions. Oops, sorry, Neil. Counsel Kinnon?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I would like some clarification, because, and I don't -- it doesn't matter to me where it comes from, but when I see legislation that raises substantial new revenue, I've yet to see the government raise any revenue other than by taxing people. So maybe there's another way. Maybe it's by lowering taxes so we could attract new businesses and actually raise revenue. But I fear if we sent something like this into the State House, that the message might be, "Raise my taxes," and the last thing you want to do going into a recession, which it appears we are going into again, it may be a double dip, but we're teetering on it anyways, would be to raise any kind of taxes. So I can certainly support encouraging business to come into the state to increase revenue. But I would like to put on here, perhaps as an addendum to this, barring raising any taxes. Otherwise, I really could not sign on to this at this time in this state of the economy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kinnon. Counsel Murphy?
Yes, I actually, and I apologize to the committee, and I will actually read the last paragraph again, actually to the council. There were some changes to this paper. And the last paragraph reads, "The Malden City Council urges the governor, the state legis -- in the state legislature, to invest in our communities, to strengthen our economy, and to improve the quality of life of Massachusetts residents." The words "by passing legislation" was struck out, that was what Karen read into the minutes. "Creating new revenue," and it deletes "while holding down increases for low and middle income individuals and families." So it basically is just leaving it open to creating new revenue. I mean, if you would like to put something in there about taxes, that's fine. I agree with you, you know, as I've spoken to--
I would, because they take that word as, oh, create new revenue, raise taxes.
Okay.
Unfortunately, too many of them.
Right, and I agree with you. One of the discussions I have had, you know, with the groups is the fact that what they need -- what the legislature needs to do is be creative in finding new ways to bring businesses back that have fled to North Carolina and overseas, and be creative in finding a way to increase, you know, the business group here. So do you have a suggestion as to how you'd like to reword this?
Well, I -- I'm not the greatest of wordsmiths. I know what I want, but I know that clerk is, and maybe she can add something in. I think she knows what I'm getting at here.
Okay, one more comment.
I'll take, yeah, I'll -- more, if there's more comments, other people have suggestions that are more legal-minded than I am.
Let's get to the comments first, and then we'll have our--
Okay, thank you.
-- our clerk. Counsel Dargangelo.
Thank you, Madam President. And I agree with the esteemed counselor to my left here that we should try to make a point of not raising taxes in this tough economic times, and I think the counselor is amenable to that. So perhaps we could insert some language that would say something to the effect of no new taxes, and give them the creativity. Because I -- certainly, everybody here will support the communities, absolutely will reinvest and invest in our communities. But I don't think raising revenue, I agree, when I see that, it's basically synonymous with increasing taxes. So as long as we can put a separate line in that says, "No new taxes or fees shall be raised," I think that would be the simplest way around it. I could support it then. I couldn't support it as it is now, because, again, I don't think now is the time for taxes, for new taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dargangelo. Counselor Anderson.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I have the same kind of concerns about how it looks when we say raising new revenue. But the reality, ladies and gentlemen, is, is that we do need more money coming to the cities and towns. We need more money coming to the city of Malden to fix our roadways, to fix our sidewalks, and you know that every time we hear from our constituents who are raising these issues about, "How can we do these things?" It takes money. And so certainly politically, it doesn't sound very nice. It sounds like we're a bunch of tax-and-spend liberals who want more money. But we understand the message. The message is that we need to be able to get more revenue here in the city of Malden so that we can fix what's needed. We know that, you know, and I get calls every day about our crumbling streets, our deteriorating sidewalks, you know, and all the other list of things here, our need for -- all these things cost money. And I think I heard someone say, you know, that, you know, we all want, we all want the money, but we don't want to, say, raise taxes. So it's like, you know, we all want to go to heaven, but no one wants to die. And so--
Did you like that one? I like that one.
I can't say that is a -- that is a original from me. I've heard that from somebody else. But you understand what I'm saying, that we do need more money here coming into the city, and we need to find a way to have that happen. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson. Counsel Lucy.
Thank you, Madam President. I, too, would issue a little bit of caution here. You know, I think anyone that's been involved with government, I've been involved 10 years now, whether it's the schools or the city, and every year we run into the budget shortfalls and what we need to plug holes, and there's no one more aware that we're not, we're not getting enough from the state, but in the same token, the state doesn't have any more to give. And I would just be real careful. I think that, you know, some of the concerns appear true. I mean, I think the state has looked at about every which way that they can, they can raise money, even dipping into their rainy day fund, and every year the state struggles with it also. So, you know, and there's, you know, I'm not, I agree with most of these things on this. There's a couple I would, I would definitely have a problem with, because I don't think that it would have anything to do with state funding. But with that being said, I would too, would caution on this too, also about, you know, the only way you're going to raise revenue is raise taxes, because really no other way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lucy. Counselor Matheson?
Nester.
Or Counsel Nester, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I agree and would support the intent of this, but I think this piece of paper is so poorly written that it needs to be redrafted. You know, holding down increases, it doesn't even explain what those increases could be in this. There's no way, there's no way anybody reading this would not take it that we're suggesting that they raise taxes. So I don't know if the sponsor would like to table it for a week and redraft it, or maybe work with the city clerk to redraft it. But I think the intent is good, but it's just this is so poorly written, I couldn't support this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Nester. Counsel Matheson.
So for Counsel Kinnon's consideration for his proposed motion that he mentioned, perhaps we amend the last sentence to read, "By creating new revenue while not raising taxes." I think that reconciles the concerns with the desires. And if Counsel Kinnon likes that language, it can be his motion to amend the language that way, and I'll second it. I defer to Counsel Kinnon.
Thank you, Counsel Matheson. Do you make a motion, Jim?
You do. Well--
You didn't make a motion.
I think you did.
Recommendation, I think, Bob. Counselor, oh my gosh, I'm drawing a --
Thank you, Counsel Murphy.
I apologize. It's been a recommendation for table, but not a motion. What would you--
I actually would like to table it and take it, take it back to committee, redraft it, and bring it back to the floor.
Okay, so are you making that motion?
I will make that motion.
Second? Does that, do I have a second? Second by Counsel Anderson. All in favor? Opposed? Passes.
Table to the next meeting.
Table to the next meeting. Next order of business.
Approval of the minutes of the council meeting of, council meetings of May 15th, May 22nd, and May 29th.
On Counsel Matheson's motion to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Next order of business.
Dear members of the council pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby reappoint Patricia K. Longhorn of 472 Highland Ave., Malden, Massachusetts, as a member of the planning board set term to expire March 1st, 2017. Very truly yours, Gary Christensen, Mayor. Confirmation is required.
On Counsel Lucy's motion to refer to the Appointments Committee, all in favor? Opposed?
Dear members of the council pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby reappoint Michael Cipriano of 77 High Rock Road, Malden, Massachusetts, as a member of the planning board set term to expire March 1st, 2016. Very truly yours, Gary Christensen, Mayor. Confirmation is required.
On Counsel Lucy's motion to refer to Appointments Committee, all in favor? Opposed?
Dear members of the council pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby reappoint Diane Chuha of 19 Marion Street, Malden, Massachusetts, as a member of the planning board set term to expire March 1st, 2016. Very truly yours, Gary Christensen, Mayor. Confirmation is required.
On Counsel Lucy's motion to refer to Appointments Committee, all in favor?
Dear members of the council pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby appoint Simon Muzawik--
Muzawik.
Muzawik, thank you, of 61 Mill Street, Malden, Massachusetts, as a member of the planning board set term to expire March 1st, 2017. Very truly yours, Gary Christensen, Mayor. Confirmation is required.
On Counsel Lucy's motion to refer to Appointments Committee, all in favor? Opposed? Next order of business.
Application for amusement machine license, licenses, Fizz Ads 142 Pleasant Street, secondhand dealer's license, Blockbuster 171 Center Street, Peroni Jewelers 22 Eastern Ave., pool table license ITAMs 40 Oakland Street, Ancient Order of Hibernians 259 Charles Street, Fizz Ads 142 Pleasant Street, Lawyer Order of the Moose 562 Broadway, RFA Mald-- um, excuse me, application for renewal of bowling alley license, RFA Malden 11 Charles Street, application for transfer of class two dealer's licenses at 16 Charles Street and 251 Broadway.
On Counsel Anderson's motion to refer to License Committee, all in favor? Opposed? Next order of business.
Resolve that it is the sense of the city council that the Traffic Commission install a "go slow" children's sign on Talbot Street near the corner of Pleasant Street. Counsel Altrino.
Just refer, please, Madam President.
On Counsel Altrino's motion to pa -- to refer to traffic, all in favor?
Resolve that it is the sense of the city council that the Traffic Commission install no parking any time signs on the tennis court fence on Davidson Way. Counsel Altrino.
On Counsel Altrino's motion to move to traffic, all in favor?
Resolve that it is the sense of the city council that the Traffic Commission install street sweeping signs on Highland Court and Adam Street with designated day and time of sweeping. Counsel Altrino.
On Counsel Altrino's motion to move to traffic, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolve that it is the sense of the city council that the Traffic Commission install two-hour parking Monday through Friday between 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. on the east even side of Highland Ave. between Whitman Street and Charles Street. Counsel Altrino.
On Counsel Altrino's motion to pass, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Motion to refer.
I'm sorry, a motion to refer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Resolve that it is the sense of the city council that the mayor authorized funds to install upgrades to Garbrell System in City Hall. Counselors Kinnon and Bucci.
Counsel Kinnon? For the paper?
Yes, this was brought to my attention by Counsel Bucci. And if you look outside, the railings are like wrought iron of some sort, and a young child, that age, could actually fit through those. So Counsel Bucci brought it to our attention, and we're asking that the city put up either a Plexiglas or some type of barrier so that a child could not go through and get, you know, gravely hurt. So, that's it.
On Counsel Kinnon's motion to pass, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
The claim of Gerald E. Di Benedetto, 228 Mount Ave., Malden.
On Counsel Lucy's motion to refer to finance, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
The Standing Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred Paper Number 217, series of 2012, having considered the same, make the following report. Order that the fees for certain alcoholic beverage licenses be increased. Committee recommends that this paper be reported out favorably. Counselor Nester for the committee.
On Counsel Nester's motion to receive the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel Nester's for the, for the report.
Thank you, Madam President. This was a recommendation of the Licensing Committee that we increase fees slightly. The Board, excuse me, the Ordinance Committee reviewed it and voted out favorably five to zero. I'm hoping that the council can see fit to approve these increases as well. Thank you.
Seeing no questions on Counsel Nester's motion to adopt, is a roll call?
Counselor Anderson.
Yes.
Yes. Crowe.
Yes.
Yes. Dargangelo.
Yes.
Kinnon.
Yes.
Lucy.
Yes.
Matheson.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Nester.
Yes.
Yes. Spatafora.
Yes.
Altrino.
Yes.
Yes. Bucci.
Yes.
Yes.
Eleven to zero. Passes. Next order of business.
The Standing Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred Paper Number 218, series of 2012, having considered the same, make the following report. Order that the city establish a pilot program for permitting street performers. Committee recommends that this paper be reported out favorably with the following amendment, that a committee established by the mayor, including at least one representative of the police chief, screen applicants and provide recommendations for permitting to the city council License Committee, who shall have final permit issuing authority. Counselor Nester for the committee.
On Counsel Nester's motion to receive the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel Nester for the paper.
Thank you, Madam President. This came down from the mayor's office as a way to bring people into the square. There'd be a number of small areas where street performers could perform. And again, it's a, it's a--
Pilot.
It's a pilot program to drive people into the square, spend a little more time in the square, and see what we have to offer down there. So the committee revised it a little bit to make sure that we have the proper authorities in the mayor's office and the police, and notification goes out to the merchants in the downtown area to go in. And we'll review it after one year to see if it is successful, and make changes if need be at that point. So I'd hope that we could support this as the ordinance committee has.
Thank you, Counsel Nester. Counsel Spatafora.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one question, I apologize, I'm not an ordinance, and I make it. It just, I remember reading an article a couple of years ago on for the paper. I was just wondering, will the performers have to have insurance? Because I remember reading an article in, no, in Boston, in Haymarket, one of them landed on somebody in the crowd, they would do an acrobatic thing, and they sued the city of Boston because they own Faneuil Hall. So I don't know if it's something you want to think about, but I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but I'm just thinking--
Right, right.
I'm just thinking--
No, I think, well--
If we authorize them.
It has to be vetted out.
Okay.
And I think if the police had any, any issues or concerns that anybody would be hurt with, by whatever the performance would be--
Yeah.
That they would not issue the, or not recommend, recommend that the Licensing Committee issue the permit.
Okay.
I think we're good on that one.
And a point of information, Mr. Duffy has confirmed that that would be liability insurance would be involved.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam President.
Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of questions, and I'm sorry I was not able to attend that meeting either. What are the specific areas where these performers will be allowed? And is there any, having been in Faneuil Hall Square and seeing how much attraction performers can bring to a certain area, is there any crowd control, or are there any certain hours of operation? How exactly is this working?
Yeah, there are three small areas on Pleasant Street, you know, a couple of them on the upper end of Pleasant Street in front of the new parking lot. The police chief has to approve the performance and recommend it. So there would be, if he felt that the crowd, or this would attract a big crowd, there'd be a, a, not a patrol, but a detail, thank you very much, that would be added as well. So, again, it's just a pilot program. We're going to take it on a case-by-case basis and, and--
Are there any restrictions on hours? Is this Monday through Sunday?
Yes.
Twenty-four hours, or?
Yeah, there are restrictions in only certain times of the day and certain times of the week.
Okay.
Weekends. Yeah.
And they are? I'm just curious.
I believe it was Friday and Saturday from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Yeah.
Okay, so just Friday and Saturday?
Again, it's just a pilot program at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see any. On Counsel Nester's motion to amend with committee report and adopt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Next order of business?
Standing Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred Paper Number 128, series of 2012, having considered the same, make the following report. Be it ordained that Sections 11.55 to 11.59 be amended regarding public shade trees. Committee recommends that this paper be reported out favorably. Counselor Nester for the committee.
On Counsel Nester's motion to receive the committee report, all in favor? Opposed? Counsel Nester for the paper.
This is a great paper that the sponsor, sitting beside me, Counsel Matheson, put through. I fully support this, about increasing, you know, getting trees in the area and becoming the Tree City again. I think it's a great beautification project, a paper, and I'd ask if the sponsor would like to say a few words and more, to give more details on this.
Thank you very much, Counsel. This, this ordinance modernized tree care ordinance, which was long overdue. It brings us into step with other municipalities and communities around us, and it's a prerequisite to qualifying for Tree City USA, which I know enjoys a lot of support among the mayor's office and the various counselors. It also consolidates tree care and tree planting with the Public Works Mission and the Director of DPW. So, anyway, we're, we're happy about the paper, so, yeah.
I don't see any other questions. On Counsel Matheson's, I'm sorry, Counsel Anderson.
Forgive me for being so rude and tapping on the, on the table here, but our light is not working. And I just wanted to, to comment about the shade trees, you know? I think we all have experienced these tree, the problem that we've had with these trees that have been planted throughout our city. You know, there was a great ideas of having these trees planted, but look what's happened now, how the trees have lifted up the sidewalks, they, they bother the, the overhead lighting, they block the overhead lighting, they, they interfere with the, with the, with the wires and all of those sort of things. I love trees. I love having trees in our city. I think it really makes the city a community. But I hope that there will be more attention paid to making sure that we acquire the correct trees, not trees that 20 years out are going to give us the kind of problems that we have with the trees that we have here today. So I will certainly support this, this paper, but, but support it with that, with that word that I hope that the body that's overseeing this will take into consideration the problems that we've had with the, with the current trees that we have that have caused so much trouble in our city today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson. I see no other lights. On Counsel Matheson's motion to enroll, roll call.
Counsel Anderson.
Yes.
Yes. Crowe.
Yes.
Yes. Dargangelo.
Yes.
Kinnon.
Yes.
Lucy.
Yes.
Matheson.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Nester.
Yes.
Spatafora.
Yes.
Yes.
Eleven to zero, passes. On Counsel Matheson's motion to ordain, roll call, I'm sorry, on Counsel Matheson's motion to suspend rules for purposes of ordaining, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? On Counsel Matheson's motion to ordain, is a roll call.
Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Yes, Crowe?
Yes.
Yes, Dark Angelo?
Yes.
Yes, Kinnon?
Yes.
Yes, Lucy?
Yes.
Yes, Matheson?
Yes.
Yes, Murphy?
Yes.
Yes, Nestor?
Yes.
Yes, Spetafora?
Yes.
Altrino?
Yes.
Yes, Bucci?
Yes.
Yes.
Eleven to zero, he was ordained, next order of business?
The standing committee on appointments, to whom was referred paper number 2012, series of, 2012, I'm sorry, 212, series of 2012, having considered the same, make the following report, mayor's appointment of Shannon Brandello of 80 Adam Street as a member of the Board of Appeals for a term to expire May 1st, 2015, committee recommends that this appointment be confirmed, Counselor Lucy for the committee.
On Council Lucy's motion to receive the committee report, all in favor? Opposed? Council Lucy for the paper.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we, we met with Shannon Brandello tonight, she's a mayor's appointment to the Board of Appeals, and, uh, we voted three-zero after interviewing her, and hope that the city council sees it the same way and will support her as well, thank you.
Seeing no question, no lights on, on Council Lucy's motion to confirm, is a roll call?
Counsel Anderson?
Yes.
Yes, Crowe?
Yes.
Yes, Dark Angelo?
Yes.
Yes, Kinnon?
Yes.
Yes, Lucy?
Yes.
Yes, Matheson?
Yes.
Yes, Murphy?
Yes.
Yes, Nestor?
Yes.
Yes, Spetafora?
Yes.
Altrino?
Yes.
Yes, Bucci?
Yes.
Yes.
Eleven to zero, she's confirmed, next order of business?
Under suspension of docket rules, resolve that is the sense of the city council that the traffic commission restrict parking to 30 minutes on the northerly side of Eastern Ave. from Broadway to opposite the intersection of Prentice Street, Counselor Bucci.
On my motion to suspend docket rules, all in favor? Opposed? Um, this paper actually is a, um, paper, um, with the hope that traffic will look at the parking difficulties and challenges along that particular strip on Eastern Ave., there's many businesses, new businesses moving in, auto repair shops, and unfortunately, um, there's, I think, a fair amount of parking for the length of the day that is taking place that is causing, um, a bottleneck to take place on a very busy roadway, as well as causing impediments to other businesses, and specifically, businesses who need to have access to their buildings are being blocked, so, my hope is that, um, um, my colleagues will, um, accept, um, transferring this over to traffic, so on that, I don't see any questions, so on, um, motion to pass, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next order of business?
Under suspension of docket rules, resolve that is the sense of the city council that the appointments committee consider the appointment of Andrew Popoli of 5 Piggum Street to the Commission on Energy Efficiency, Counselor Spetafora.
On Counsel Spetafora's motion to suspend docket rules, all in favor? Counsel Spetafora?
Thank you, Madam President, uh, I think some of yous may recognize the name, some of yous may not, uh, Mr. Popoli, uh, actively campaigned for the city of Malden election last year, I came in for an interview in the mayor's office, I sat with him, is for the Energy Efficiency Committee, be a great candidate, has a background in, uh, real estate, and has a real, uh, uh, kind of, you know, know-how about, uh, how to make, uh, real estate more efficient, uh, energy-wise, as far as lighting and, uh, water, so I'd be more than happy to sponsor him for the full committee, and hope, uh, you agree with my decision for, uh, his appointment to the Energy Efficiency Committee, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, on Counsel Spetafora's, um, motion to move, refer to appointment committee, all in favor? Opposed? Passes? Next order of business?
The docket is clear.
Personal privilege, Counselor Altrino? Or Counsel Lucy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I actually have a couple, um, first one, I would like to, uh, recognize somebody in the audience, uh, I think anyone in public office, uh, we have a lot of interaction with, uh, the press and the papers and things of that nature, and, uh, Kevin Macchioli's in the audience tonight for the Malden News, this is Kevin's last week, as a reporter for the Malden News, he's actually, uh, moving on to, uh, something he seems better, and I'm, I'm sure the, uh, the county, the, uh, Middlesex Sheriff's Office will be great, greatly, uh, improved with Kevin, uh, at the helm over there, so, Kevin was always a reporter, you never minded calling back because he was always fair, it wasn't the type of thing, sometimes you, you can talk to the press and maybe give him a ten interview, a 10-minute interview where maybe only a couple things get in the, the article, and sometimes, that's not quite you wanted to say, what you wanted to say, but Kevin was always very fair, so I wish Kevin well, and I think the Malden News here and the city council will miss you. Uh, my second, uh, one is this time of year, it's, it's a great time of year for, uh, school tournaments, uh, I was at the Malden High, uh, boys', uh, baseball tournament today, they, they just won their second, uh, game in the turn- tournament, they beat Lynn four to nothing, uh, anyone that follows baseball, it reminded me of the old National League days when Greg Maddox used to pitch, very crisp, no walks, uh, it was just a well-played game and Malden's advancing, they, they won last week, they, they drew a bye the first, first round, they won the second round, and they won again today, so, they'll be playing again, I believe, Thursday, and with any luck, I don't know the outcome, but their next opponent will be the winner of the Lowell MC game, which was playing at four o'clock today, so I'd love to see a MC-Malden High matchup, uh, if that was to be the case, that'd be something great, but, I wish the boys well, and I also, the girls', the girls' softball, uh, they finished, uh, 19 and one this year, they also won their first, first, they drew a bye and they won their first match, and they'll be playing tomorrow, I believe, at four o'clock, so they have, uh, they have a lot of talent on that team, and I, and I see them going further in the tournament as well, it's always great to see these local teams do well, and I know the charter school baseball team is all, is also advanced, so, anytime your, your local high school does good, it only brings good things to your community, so I wish them all luck, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lucy, Counsel Anderson?
Thank you, Madam President, uh, first off, I'd like to, uh, say thank you to all of those people who came out, uh, this last Sunday to Miller Park where there was a, uh, a painting party going on, uh, folks who have been meeting, uh, around the potential plans for the restoration and improvement of Miller Park, came out on Sunday, and they were painting, uh, very colorful and creative artwork on the trash containers, and just keeping involved in, uh, in, in helping to improve that park, uh, it's a testament, I believe, to folks who come out on their day off and their time off to, to do things to help our city to improve, so I say hats off to those folks who came out on Sunday to help paint there at Miller Park. On a personal note, I'd like to, uh, extend my congratulations to my daughter, Christie, Christie graduated from Cambridge College, uh, on Sunday as well, and has, uh, received a master in education in, in psychology and counseling, and I'm very proud of my youngest daughter, so I want to extend a very hearty congratulations and best wishes to her, as well as my grandson, Maurice McGrath III, who graduated from Medford High School, and he'll be going off to, to University of Massachusetts and, at Dartmouth in the fall, and to all of the graduates that are coming up, uh, from all of our schools, uh, these are milestones along the way, and we just wish them all the very, very best, thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson, Counsel Murphy?
Thank you, Madam President, just like to, uh, announce that the second quarter Ward Five meeting is going to be held Monday, June 18th, at the Forestale School in the cafeteria, the meeting will begin at 6:30, and this, uh, quarter's meeting is actually, uh, we're combining with the mayor's public safety meeting, he has been going around the community, having his public safety meeting, and he is coming to Ward Five for our second quarter, uh, meeting, um, representatives from the fire department and the police department will also be on hand to answer questions and also to impart, uh, information on how to keep our community safe and our folks healthy, so we hope to see you all there, uh, and, uh, actually, if you've missed one of the other ward meetings, uh, anyone is welcome to, to come from the city, and I just wanted to announce that Ward Five's 4th of July will be held on the Wednesday, the 4th of July, at the Forestale Park, and it will begin at nine o'clock, if you would like to come help that day, or help, uh, with, um, preparations prior to that, please email me at, um, murphy4wood4@wood5@yahoo.com, or, um, at b murphy@cityofmalden.org, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy, Counselor Nestor?
Thank you, Madam President, I just wanted to, uh, thank, um, Earl Fitzpatrick, he's the, um, Malden liaison, I guess, the school committee to the, the Volk, and I've had an opportunity to work with him, uh, a little bit over the last month and a few other times, and, uh, he's been incredibly helpful, I just want to publicly acknowledge his, his help and, uh, thank him for his efforts on, on, um, on my behalf, um, just a, a great, uh, guide to work with, uh, very easygoing, got back to me right away, and I just wanted to publicly thank him for his help.
Thank you, Counsel Nestor, anybody, Counsel Crowe?
Hi, um, thank you very much, I just wanted to say that, obviously, everybody knew that we had to postpone our Ward One clean sweep last week, and so we, um, we're having it this Saturday, so, I hope everybody gets out there, cleans the front of their properties, moves their cars, so we can really get, do some spring cleaning, I actually wanted to congratulate the class of 2012, which will be, um, graduating on Sunday, and, um, and finally, that, don't forget that Flag Day, our annual Flag Day celebration will take place at Bell Rock Park, Thursday, June 14th, starting at 5:30, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Crowe, Counsel Spetafora?
Thank you, Madam President, I just wanted to, uh, kind of piggyback off what Counsel Lucy said, uh, with regards to the Malden News, uh, Kevin Macchioli, um, you know, it's always good to see somebody move on in their career, I think Kevin definitely deserves it, um, he's been very respectful, I think, uh, to all the candidates during the election season, I know, me personally, uh, but I know one thing I'll miss is, uh, his fair and accurate coverage of the city, I know if anybody ever reads his op-eds, he does always take sometimes the opposite side of, uh, not only the city, but only the mayors, and only the councils, but I think it's good to see that in journalism today, um, I just, you know, I want to recognize him and his work here in the city of Malden, he continues on the, the sheriff department, but more importantly, just, uh, make sure your, uh, replacement does the same, uh, type of investigative report of, uh, maybe make it a little tougher, so, good luck, um, Kevin, and, uh, hope to see you around. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Spetafora, Counsel Kinnon?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam President, I too would like to, uh, thank Kevin Macchioli, and wish him the best of luck, uh, having, having been a former Ward Six resident, Garden Street, same street as myself, we often don't agree on things, uh, but, but his attitude, I really appreciate, coming from Ward Six, I would expect nothing less, so, uh, Kevin, good luck, we are gonna miss you, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Counsel Kinnon, I see no more lights, so for me, Kevin, I just want to thank you for the fair coverage that you have had, but I've had the pleasure of knowing you since you were a little guy on the field, um, so it's been pretty overwhelming for me to watch you grow up, to be such a wonderful young man, you know, have a fabulous family, a young little guy in your life, and I do really personally want to wish you the very best in the next adventure that you're going into, and, and I agree with Counsel Spetafora, I do hope your replacement brings the integrity and credibility that you brought to the chamber on many of our tough issues, but also the ones that have been, um, you know, fond memories as well, so wishing you the best, good luck, um, I also want to, um, have a moment of silence, if folks could indulge me, Kathy Proctor passed away, um, this past week, member of Zonta, uh, Zonta, as well as, um, mother to Tom Proctor, who we recently acknowledged on the Laurel Street Fire, so if we could just stand for a moment, please? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?